So if folks would join me, we will stand and recite the national, the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation in the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Welcome. I will call our council meeting to order on May 20th. Has anyone have any issues with the agenda? Approval of the agenda is the first thing on the agenda. Motion to approve the agenda, please.
Some of them.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Five zero, it's approved. With regard to the consent agenda, I'm going to press... Oh, thank you, Kevin. I realize you weren't telling me, but... With regard to the consent agenda, I'm going to do it as I've done at the last couple of meetings, which is, we'll just go through the three major portions of it. The, you have the minutes of the May 6th meeting. Is there anything substantive that needs to be changed in those minutes? And if not, is there a motion to approve? Do I have a, I'll make a motion to approve them then.
I'll second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Approval of warrants, an amount of $198,382.12. Any questions of Janet or Mark about that?
There was one on there that said, from Baumgartner, says it's shotgun shells. Is that for the PD?
That's for our guy at the academy.
For the guy at the academy?
Yeah.
Okay, that's kind of what I figured, but...
Anything else? Motion to approve?
Oh, hang on, sorry, I did have one more. The chingawassa buttons.
Oh, they're already on there?
Yeah.
Well, that's so we can catch the reduced price, but we won't do it until you approve it. But we didn't want to wait.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that saves what, five bucks a button, something like that?
Ten.
Ten bucks a button, okay. Motion to approve the warrants.
I move. Can we approve warrants?
Box of moves, is there a second?
I'll second.
Smith seconds. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Let's have it. Approval of payroll, the amount of $37,167.67. Any questions or comments with regard to payroll? I'll move that we approve the payroll. Is there a second?
I'll second.
My motion approved, or seconded by Collett, unless there's discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Just again, as we move into the public comment portion of the agenda, a few rules of procedure. Remember, we are recording the meeting, so we do need people to use the microphone at the council, at the table, if you wish to address the council. The recorded meeting will be shown on Vive Cable TV on Tuesdays at 7:00. It's also available anytime on YouTube or the city's website through YouTube. You can go to MCTV20, two zero, live, or you can just go to the website. That's about it. Please silence your phones. Okay. Any public comment on matters included in tonight's agenda? See some people walking in. We're just at the point of asking if anyone has any public comment on matters on tonight's agenda. A public comment, okay, we'll move on. The chingawassa buttons, as Zach referenced, was on the, for discussion last meeting. It's on for action tonight. Any questions, comments with regard to purchasing one chingawassa button for each city employee?
This was just for full-time employees, correct?
Correct, yes.
Is there a motion?
I move that we pay for the chingawassa buttons for the full-time city employees.
Box is motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We give it to Burke Holder on the second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes, five zero.
Thank you.
Well, you're very welcome.
Thank you.
We, last week, Mark was ordered to leave because we thought there was going to be a really bad storm roll in that turned out to be really nothing. But I guess if, we could have used the rain, Mark, so I probably would have been better if you had stuck around. Yeah, last night was good. But I, I did kind of preface that you and I had talked and you were thinking, with regard to what we're talking about is the amount of money that is on a budgeted item that can be spent without coming back before the council. And what we had talked about was setting an amount that would go, if it's a budgeted item, it would go to the city administrator, who would then just bring it back to the council for informational purposes, although that would allow the council to stop the purchase, stop the expenditure, if there was a reason to do so. And I threw out, I think, Mark, we had talked about 20, but I indicated that you had said you'd be comfortable with other amounts as well.
I did think there was some confusion. We wanted to make sure there's not confusion in the future. I just, you know, checking some towns and knowing what other towns have done. You're at $10,000. I would say, because of inflationary pressures, I'd just move it to 15 and stay with that. Getting over 15 budget would come to you, particularly things have gone up in prices the last few years so much.
And I'll, I'll say what I say every time this is brought up. I don't think we're at $10,000 because I don't think that what occurred, that anything in our policy, that it fell within the parameters of that policy. But for the, for the future, we'll set it at, can you say 15?
Yeah, I think that's a fair number.
What's the council think?
He's right in the middle.
Okay. Well, it's a, we'll be setting policy, so I think we do need to take a vote on it. I'll move that for purposes, as stated previously, for purposes of budgeted items that are going to cost $15,000 or more, the policy would be that the, before a supervisor, department head acts on that, they take the issue to the city administrator, who brings it to the council prior to spending any money or locking us into spending any money. So that's, I think, the motion that I'll make that.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion?
So that, that would exclude the regular transactions?
Everything else would be the same.
Or a regular scheduled transaction or a custom, whatever it's called, those that are already going to...
Yeah, and every town, like for chemical, for water, plant.
Things that aren't a decision, that are just a regular scheduled purchase.
Yeah, I think the policy's pretty...
It says that all the...
Good.
It does, it's good. There's a little bit of confusion. I just thought we put a number in there, make it easy.
And that's for budgeted items, correct?
Yep. Yeah, if it's not a budgeted item, it's definitely coming before the council. All right, unless there's further discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes, five zero. Janet, we've got a liquor license application before us. Do you want to speak about that?
It's for Tammy and me over here. The, what was that restaurant called before?
What was the parlor?
The chef's, or the chef's place.
Oh, well, yeah, it was a parlor before it was a chef's place.
That closed, and they have somebody new coming in to open it up again, and they want to get their license in their name. They've already applied with the state, so everything, pretty much everything's payable. We just need a few licenses approval.
Is this the, I saw this, we, earlier on a application for a temporary license that Mac does, did for our dinner last year. And basically, what the city had to do was verify that the area, the thing that the license was going to be entered into, allowed for, was within an area that's zoned properly, that it's in the city limits, all that. Is that what we're acknowledging tonight?
Yes.
I think, like you said, it's more of an acknowledgement. As long as it's not a C and B license, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong here, is the state is ultimately the final issuer on a liquor license unless it's a C and B license.
Correct.
Yeah, so we're just verifying that the app, the information put in the application is accurate with regard to those areas.
Yeah.
And this is for the address where, over there at the parlor?
It'll be called the parlor again.
Anyone wish to move?
Maybe just a quick informational thing. So I think our city ordinances state that you, they can't, you can't have a liquor license within, what is it, 150 feet? Or there's a, there's a set amount of feet within a church, which the parlor falls under that, but they have a conditional use permanent, excuse me, conditional use permit to be there.
So...
Is it in someone's name or is it just in the parlor? Is there...
The parlor.
The parlor, okay.
So I'll, I will move to allow the clerk to respond to the state and acknowledge that the information provided to us is accurate.
I'll second that.
Burke Holder, seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay. Counselor, department, and staff reports. Mark, do you want to kick us off?
What I have, we have, we'll be bringing back in the next meeting, I think, once we get a little bit of clarification. We may have a short sewer relining project that goes under a rub where we, we had some infiltration.
That's it? It's boring in your world right now.
It is.
Janet, how about you?
Nope, I have nothing.
Margot?
Yeah, there's a welcome reception on Wednesday morning from 9:30 to 10:30 a.m. at the Elgin for the California State San Bernardino Track Team. They're coming in tomorrow, and they're staying here all week. They're competing at Nationals at Emporia State. And so we just wanted to do a little reception welcome for them, and we're hoping everybody will come and greet them.
When is that again?
It's Wednesday from 9:30 to 10:30 a.m.
What was the name of their team again?
It's the Cal State San Bernardino Track Team.
Are you Googling their mascot? Are you going to come dressed as the mascot?
Right.
Anything else from you?
Other than that, I'm going to let Aaron tell you about it, but I'm disappointed that they vandalized the park bathrooms.
Hold on a minute, take that back, please. I just, we talked about this in the study session last week. I just want to confirm tonight, because this is being recorded, that you and the city are, have an agreement that you're going to remain as a full-time employee through the balance of this year and will probably go to part-time status in the following year. Don't know if it's that to January 1 or sometime thereafter. But I know people have asked about that because I don't know if they don't think that you're safe if you're not here every day, but I, I think it's because they want to make sure that old settlers, not old settlers day, but art in the parks taken care of and the other things.
Yeah, we're good. Not going to leave an alert.
Okay.
I, I turned it on, Gene, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think it's on.
I know, I wondered. I, I don't know, I turned it, can you do anything more with it?
The green light's on.
Green light's on, I don't know.
So the police department doesn't really have much, other than to add a little bit to what Marcus said. We're aware of what's going on. We don't have any idea who's doing it. This isn't the first time. We are in the process of getting cameras put up so we can maybe use that to tour some of the crime and then get an idea of who's going in and what times, and hopefully get a stop to what's going on to the bathroom. Today, there was, was it the girls or men's bathroom?
The men's.
So the men's bathroom, somebody had kicked in the door to one of the stalls and tried ripping it from the wall. So we, we have no idea who's doing it, don't know what time, the date, what's going on. And we have, we try to lock the parks, or the park restrooms at midnight because that's when the park curfew is. So if you guys would want us to lock them sooner than that, just let us know. I just, we just felt like, might as well lock them when the park curfew is. Other than that, the police department has that.
How, how often have they been vandalized now?
Three times this year.
Has it been the same thing, that they've kicked in a door, or?
Well, the first time, there was graffiti on the walls. And I think the top of one of the toilet tanks was shattered. And then another time, someone had broken the soap dispenser in the men's restroom. And then this time is the door to the stall.
And that's not mentioning the food?
Not mentioning that part either. But I think three times total this year that we've had issues. So I don't know when the cameras are going to be in, but whenever they are. I've talked to Tim today, and the police department's going to have access to the cameras as well. So hopefully, we can get some of this resolved and get it stopped.
Questions or comments?
I mean, I guess the person could look at probably locking the doors earlier, but you hate to have them locked if somebody's down there. But I wonder how long, how late people are really down there.
It depends on the day. Usually in the summertime, I've seen people down there all the way till, I mean, I've had to run people off at midnight. So it, it's hard to say. I mean, there's people down there at all hours. And that's the problem too. We don't know what time it's going on. It could be going on in the middle of the day and nobody knows.
Yeah.
My assumption is that it's late at night, but it's hard to tell without having the cameras or surveillance or anything like that around there.
I, I like the fact that we have the, the restrooms in the parks. Matter of fact, I, I think it would, would be good to provide a little more guidance to get to them. I, I've been through towns where, as you hit city limits, there is signage that directs you to public restrooms. When you're traveling, especially going through small towns, sometimes those can be hard to find. I don't know that I never needed one at midnight, or 11:30 even. But probably get the cameras up and see if there appears to be any sort of nexus between late at night and damage, although I'm not sure, we'll know for, sure how that, how we find that out. But if you put them up, let's see what it tells us before we do anything.
And that's, that's one of the problems too, is even having cameras up, I mean, we're not going to know exactly. We're just going to know, okay, somebody went in there at this time, there wasn't any damage, and then between, so we have like a three-hour timeframe of four people that went in. So still won't be able to narrow it down, answer any possible questions.
Could we close the bathrooms just kind of earlier for the time being? As, you know, they've been hit with vandals, just until that, maybe that can, I don't know. I don't think anybody needs to be in there at midnight.
Well, yeah, I think we set the policies so we could determine what time we wanted to close it. That, as far as sending a message, the people that are doing it are not going to get the message. Or it'll just, they can feel good because they feel like, I mean, clearly, if you're doing that, you're just trying to get a rise out of the man or whatever. You have, did you want to...
Well, no, that's a, I mean, it's a good point. It's just, it's too bad that's happening.
I agree.
I guess, when, when do you anticipate getting the cameras and stuff in good shape and...
I talked to Tim, he said he didn't know when exactly to get them. Putting them up's not going to be an issue. It's going to be super simple because they're going to be connected to the internet. I would assume probably within the next week, we probably have them, hopefully sooner, but I would, I would guess probably a week from now.
I don't know. I'm guessing that, is there any pattern to the vandalism? I mean, it just happens when it happens, right?
Yeah, it just happens when it happens, and it's not the same each time. I mean, it's vandalism, but it's, it's different types each time. It's not the same thing. We kind of have our ideas of who's doing it, but we have no way of proving it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, to answer your question, no, there's no pattern, no.
How about this, Amy, if, I mean, there's a couple of things I think you could do. You could go, although I have no idea what the cost would be. But if you stop in a, a state roadside park, everything is metal. The toilets, the urinals, the everything is metal, and it would be much harder. There wouldn't be a top of a ceramic toilet to break because it's all metal. I guess you could invest in something like that. But for now, why don't we just ask the PD to monitor it? And if it continues unabated, we'll have to think about what our options are.
So are you good with us still locking them up, or you want us to lock them sooner?
I, I would prefer that, if somebody wants to talk about it earlier time, why don't we just tell Janet to put it on the agenda? So the public knows we're talking about doing it at a later, earlier time. And I have no problem with that. I, I mean, midnight's pretty late.
I feel like the vandalize, what they're doing, breaking things and kicking in a door, that's got to be pretty loud, you know? So it's almost like they, they have to be doing it when people are not, not there during the day. Because it feels like the park's been so full lately since school's out, but...
Well, do you want to put that on for discussion and possible action at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Got two that say yes, so Janet, if you'd have that on the agenda, please. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. You're up.
So this here is from April 10th. It's department report from April 10th to today. And seven complaints with 16 inspections in that time period. Thirty grass inspections, 16 grass violations. I've issued six code orders with four yards moved so far. Grass has been early this year, probably a couple of weeks earlier than, than normal, than, than since I've been doing this here. So it just like really grows real fast. I've wrote two environmental code violations, one for yard, one for yard and automobile. Right now, we're doing three city code violations in municipal court. The abatement on 408 South Cobal Street went really, really great. All the city crews got together, and it was amazing how quickly we went through the yard and cleaned it up. And we even was able to do some salvage for the owner and apply that back to the expense of the cleanup. So, you know, that went real well. The owner was happy. Couldn't have been overwhelming for her to begin with. She had lost family, so... Building permits, issued 16 permits and 15 inspections. Nine building permits with five inspections, three electrical with three inspections, four plumbing with seven inspections. The hospital project, there are the addition onto the hospital. They're just about complete with that. I believe by the end of this month, I will be issuing a certificate of occupancy for that. Do the final inspection on that, make sure they have all their emergency lighting and exit signs up and cover plates on and all the electrical stuff. The school project, the locker rooms, concession stand, exercise, pickleball court is going real well. I have just about completed all of the rough end inspections on that project and what will be left to be final inspections as they complete the project. North Cobal, Land Real Estate, has acquired a issue, or submitted four building permits, and I've issued those four building permits to the houses on North Cobal. So that's coming, we're going to be getting started here pretty soon. I haven't heard a call for any foundation inspections on that yet, but I'm sure it's coming in the near future. East Forest, the duplex project, two of the duplexes are started. They've, we've done the foundation inspections on that, plus the underground, under the concrete plumbing inspections on that. They started the framework on that there, and seem to be moving pretty quick on that. S and S Bed Spa is finished, and issued their certificate of occupancy. They stay out there on Main Street. Look like a really nice business. So once it's all completed, it's very, very nice place. April 17th, 18th, and 19th, I went to a joint conference for the Kansas Association of Car Enforcement and the Heart of America Conference. And both organizations are ICC affiliates. First day of the conference was on solar array and battery storage installations, according to the National Electrical Code. And the second day that I followed was there, we covered the existing building code and the point system required for construction that are, it's kind of a neat thing. I know an architect, Ben Moore, who does that, point system on renovating old downtown buildings and stuff. So that the sprinklers system are not needed if they need certain points and stuff like that. That's all I have. Any questions?
Just an FYI, I talked to James actually today, just before the meeting, about, we had talked about wanting to look into updating our code. And so he goes, right now, we're 2,000, what are we?
We're on 2,000 building codes.
Okay.
For plumbing and for building and residential construction also. And 2,008 on the National Electrical Code. You know, the 2,008 just barely covers any solar right now. Solar's like blowing everything away. Did technology on solar systems, it's amazing.
And you were, and maybe this was unofficial, but my understanding is you had suggested that you thought we ought to at least get up to 2015. What, what was it?
I, I would say we go up to 2021 because there is a great expense incurred in adopting these building codes because, you know, like just one set of books, and what's required by state statutes to keep three sets of books on hand, just one set of books costs close to $1,000. So if we update every three years, then we have that expense every three years. But, you know, ultimately, it's something the council and the public.
What I had mentioned to James was, I, I've already had a couple of contacts about, if you guys bring the code up to speed, up to current date or close to it, it's going to really increase the cost of building a house, adding on a room, doing whatever. And, and he has walked us through a little bit about that and, and kind of disproved that to some extent. But I thought it would be good, if we're seriously even just thinking about it, maybe we should, before James leaves, which is going to be sometime probably in June now, try to, maybe Mark could help with this, get the word out to contractors and interested parties and let, just schedule a time when James can address questions, try to provide facts to deal with rumor and that sort of thing. And he didn't indicate he wasn't willing to do that. Anyone have an issue with doing that or want to do that? I mean, you don't have to do it, but... Mark, would you be willing to...
I'm fine.
Okay. Just try to get something and publicize it and maybe even, I mean, I don't, you know, add the paper or whatever it might be to the general public if someone's interested. But particularly want to reach out to contractors and local people like that.
Do we want to go so far as to kind of schedule a time when we're going to address it here? Decision wise, to say like, this is what we're going to be addressing at this point?
Could. You want to, if we put it on our schedule, then that lets people know that, I guess, we're seriously going to, we're not, it's not, won't be on for, it'll be on for action. And that action could be a decision to not do anything, but I, I, my perception is there's going to be at least a desire to do something.
James, where did you say, like where was Hillsborough and Peabody and the surrounding communities? Where are they at?
Uh, I'm not sure where Hillsborough is.
Okay.
I just know that Gossel just recently updated, I think, to two thousand eighteen.
And where's Harrington?
Yeah, and Harrington is at two thousand fifteen. We're looking to go to twenty twenty-one up there, you know. For the most part, building code hasn't changed a lot, you know, the foundations are all still the same depth. The water line stays at the same depth, you know, same way with sewer lines. You know, the same amount of bins is still required. Pipe sizes doesn't change. Electrical wire sizing doesn't really change that much. What is changing is the methods we're building, the materials being used to build with. And, and in order to have the right code, you have to, you know, have, make sure it's done properly. You have to get into the right codes and stuff. Solar, you know, like I mentioned earlier, solar systems, you know, two thousand eight, solar systems were just barely being heard of. But now they're being put in horrible places and then you got battery storage, which causes stuff, which is going to take, it, it encounters a new element of, you know, fire protection, you know. If this battery becomes damaged, you know, it becomes a very, a fire potential in the home. You know, things like that. I also know that I get, I get some feedback sometimes from electricians, you know. Things can be opted out, you know, that is something, these, these building codes can be, there are certain things can be kicked out of the building code as we adopt these codes also. I've seen committees opt out of certain parts of the article code, for example, you know. I don't recommend it, but I've seen it, you know.
What's the general basis or logic behind opting out of a specific thing usually? Just because it's going to really jack up the expense or?
Well, yes, okay. They say the art faults cause a greater expense and that they didn't work. They were always causing false faults. That was in the early technology, the newer technology is not quite that, it's a lot better. Basically, it's just little micro computers that took me along. I had to go to electrical class to find this out. Each breaker is a little like a computer in there and it's constantly monitoring that electrical circuit. And if it senses any place that there's a short in that circuit, it shuts it off. And, you know, those, those are the type of breakers that are being put in houses now. If an electrician doesn't get a wire nut tied all the way, and that's where fires come from, is loose connections. It builds up heat and, and you have a fire. Those aren't faults since those electrical shorts and stuff like that, you know, shut them down.
So we could, we could do, we could just pick a month if you want to and say.
The ICC has sample ordinances. I can get the sample ordinances too, to look at to invite.
Good idea. Now follow through. What's your month?
But if you're going to be on in June, you could answer the questions, I'd say July.
I, I didn't hear that.
If you're still around to answer questions in June, then I think action logically to do July to look at taking any actions.
So put this on the agenda for one of the July meetings, Janet? The, it would be to, you can, James can probably give you the specifics, but to update the, what'd you mention, three different codes there?
Uh, yes, and I recommend also that the city adopt the mechanical code also. Right now, we don't have a mechanical code and that covers the furnaces, gas, water heaters, things like that. It causes carbon dioxide. To me, that's one of the most, I feel it very, very important.
Okay, well, let's, we're going to have to be kind of aggressive in moving forward on this. But I really do think we ought to get a public meeting scheduled and, and invite the public and also any contractors and people of that nature. And then why don't you come back and give us a little primer sometime in early June? You look at me like you don't know what I'm talking about.
You talking to me?
I am talking to you.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I'm looking right over his shoulder at you.
He's not very good on that.
Just, you, you just, you just threw out the mechanical and we haven't talked about that. So, I mean, you might want to, not tonight necessarily, but sometime in June before you leave, say, okay, here's exactly what I'm recommending, if you don't mind.
You know, if you want to get started on this here and you guys are serious and you want to update your codes, you know, and even if I'm not around, I still come in and help.
Okay, yeah, thank you, sir. Anything else? Anything else for James? Okay, I think that's all the staff that's here. So let's go then to the counselor's reports or comments and we'll start with you, Tim.
First thing on the, we talked before about that, pre-application for the KDOT grant for the bike trail, which that has fallen through and that's not going to happen, right? So just so everyone knows that that's not going any further. So if there's any question on that, it's, it's dead at this point. I dropped in on the water plant the other day, just kind of give an update where the water stuff is at. They've done a lot of cleaning up around there and painting up the facilities and improving the facility since they have extra staff on hand to be doing stuff in-house versus having other people do it. The new ozone generator is in. It's not installed yet. They have to install it. And then once it's installed, the technicians will come in to get it online. That, I'm assuming would be Dr. O'Toole or his staff or his assistant to help him with that. They've been making changes and improvements on the, the rest of the system leading up to that with the chlorine. Because part of it's still in, adds chlorine, it's just the monitoring and getting that level as low as it is possible so that it's still safe and effective, but being more efficient on the system that's being working there currently. There's also been devices, I noticed around town, on some of the fire hydrants, there's red boxes. I think there's six of them around town. And those devices will automatically kick on to drain the lines to improve the water quality. So the water's not sitting in the lines longer. And these have to, otherwise they have to go around manually at each one and, and do it. And these will kick on on regular intervals, at least during the summer and in months when it's not freezing. Wintertime, they have to still do it manually, but that allows them to not be using the manpower to go around just draining those versus the machines that they have just kicking on and, and it improves the water quality. So if you see those boxes, that's what those are for. Also, they've gotten the pumps, our pumps are rather, they got a lot of mileage on them, you might say, but they've got them updated and tuned up and ready to go. So when the big water tower project, we have, there's a project repairs that that's going to be done at some point. When that comes online, they got to, those lines have to be running constantly. So they just have those prepped and ready to go, but better than they were before to be able to run, to keep the water supplies going when they're doing the big changes and repairs on that.
Last thing I, Mark said to me that I recall about that, it would be probably looking at October.
And when the water usage goes back down.
Yep. So that was just kind of an update on where it's at. And they've seen improvements in the water just overall quality, just by what they're doing and doing it more effectively and efficiently, since they're doing it in-house as much as they can. So that was all I had.
When, when Jason came on board and we didn't decrease the staffing there, part of his, and then Tim and I were at the meeting when he said it, was that with that third person, three people at the water plant instead of two, the third person could be a floater. And my understanding is that he has been doing some of that, being used in other departments as needed. But also they've been able to do repairs and, and needed maintenance and things that they would have been contracting out previously. At least that's what I understood. So I'm glad to hear that you saw that was happening.
Yeah, just walking into the facilities, you can tell it's, they've been doing changes and improving it. And hopefully extending the life of those facilities even further now by making those improvements versus our fear of having to make major changes sooner than we were expecting to.
They're going to have to happen.
We'd have to, but to make them last.
Push them down the road a little bit.
Tim, when do they expect to get that ozone, the refurbished one in?
It'll probably be a few months. Yeah, I mean, it's in, it just still needs to be installed. And they're in the process of doing that, but so I, they didn't, I think it was a couple of months that they should definitely, but I don't know exactly for sure on that. But they still have to do their part before the technicians even come in to, to do it. Because it's got to be completely ready to go before they come in and calibrate it. And then at that point, there will be two functioning ozone generators versus one. So that way the backup is here and running. So if the current one goes down, they still have the backup that will be running effectively, so.
And is it our employees that are installing it, that unit?
Yes, as far as I, there's a lot of parts and pieces. There may be some aspects of it that they don't. But my understanding is they were going to be able to do most of it.
Tim, am I remembering this incorrectly? Or is the one that is currently in place and working, the ozone generator? Is it then supposed to go in for the same kind of refurbishing that the one we've gotten back receives?
I don't, I think it has been.
I think it's, I would say.
It's been refurbished and it's fully functional now. It's just that if that one ever was to go down, we still have the next one ready, correct, to go on. So currently, we would have two fully functioning refurbished ones versus paying for brand new ones that are very expensive.
What, was it like ten thousand bucks? What was the cost of getting that? Maybe it's more than that.
Refurbished?
Yeah, it was a lot more than that.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a cheap thing.
Yeah, I knew it wasn't cheap, but.
I don't remember the dollar figure, but I know, I thought it was a lot for just redoing one. But I mean, I just, that's just.
You wanted to get out of the car wash business and get in the ozone refurbishing?
No, I do not.
Thank you, Tim.
Yep.
Kevin?
I don't really have anything. Though one thing, I think that the last meeting you'd mentioned that Brian was working on a new regulation or something for food truck. Is he still on that?
I haven't talked to him, but I did get a copy of Council Groves and I really like it. And I was kind of playing around with it the other day and I, the next time I talked to him, which I haven't recently, I may just, I told the Council Grove guy that be aware, I may just steal it. And he says he was fine with that. So, yeah, I, I'm with you. That's laying on my desk at home.
Okay, that, that was all I had.
Well, I will just go to you.
Okay.
Say the best part.
I only had, Tim, you said the pre-application for the KDOT bike path? I guess I'm, because we applied, we did the, we did the, for, are you talking the one from the here in town to the lake?
The one that Darren was going to go talk to the landowners about.
Yeah.
That one. He can't get landowners.
It was in one of our updates, just saying that that, they couldn't get the permission from landowners that were necessary.
It was too quick in process.
Okay.
So they tried to talk about.
So there's no way it was going to happen, so they just drop it at that point on.
That was all I had.
Oh, okay.
I'm done.
Kevin answered for me with the, the trip.
Oh, all right. Couple of things. At the study session, work session, I was supposed to put together some topics that we could assign to the sessions for the future. And so I've done that. I'll read them, but probably what you would prefer is I'll, I'll just have, I'll get this to Janet. I actually wrote it in a way I think is readable. And let her just send it out to you and if you like this, the way I've got it lined out, we can, we can do it this way. So what I've got is, I, I think June 10th, which is our next one coming up, it would be good to just generally have it just budget, budget, budget. Just talk about the budget. And by then, I'm, I'm hopeful we'll have, what timeline did you give, Mark? Did you give staff for getting there?
Well, they're working on it now. We'll have another, we'll have a meeting tomorrow, talk about it. I, I think you're still waiting on valuation by June 15th, as I recall.
Did you not, did you or did you not take that June one off last meeting?
He hadn't taken, we did.
He did take it off.
Took it off, but discussed bringing it back on just for the sake of discussing the budget before.
We talked about it, you're right, but I, I thought that we left it on because the budget stuff's moving quickly.
We've got, I thought we had, we'd taken it, I thought we had taken it off.
Well, we have June 24th.
We have the June 24th budget.
Right, right, but that's with the Lloyd group person. I want our group, and it doesn't have to be June 10th, it could be after we have the meeting with the Lloyd person. But I want the council to be able to sit down and look at what Mark and staff have been looking at and what different departments want and so on. And, and just walk and look at that before we actually have any kind of an actual formal budget hearing on anything.
Yeah, I would think I would make that discussion happen after Lloyd comes. Because the guys aren't going to know anything until we talk to the Lloyd group on where we're at. So I think in order for the department heads to be prepared well enough to give what they want.
I don't understand that. I mean, they still should be able to go through and say things they think they need. And then obviously those would be subject to being cut if the, if we get the information from Lloyd says we don't have the money to do those things. But you, you should know right now whether you want to have a, a new desk in that corner or buy a computer program, shouldn't you?
Not necessarily. I mean, if the money isn't there, the money isn't there.
Well, but you know whether the need or not the need is there. That's what I want to know is what do we need?
We put the numbers together and whether it's the 10th or a little bit later, I'm not sure. I went here last meeting, I'm not sure what the discussion was. You just want to have a separate one on the budget?
Well, I, I think the only discussion was at the study session.
Okay, we'd have it on the 10th, I mean.
Well, nobody wants to do it on the 10th, which is fine. I know I left that meeting thinking we were still doing it, but I, I have no problem with moving it. But if we're going to move that and do it after the June 24 one, then I think we better do it in July, would be my comment. So, okay, we can come back to that. And then obviously June 24 is the budget meeting. That's at six with someone from the Lloyd group. September 23, what I'm proposing would be the, we talked about putting together some kind of a maintenance schedule for city property. So you're talking city equipment, city property, which I think would include even this building, just a, a schedule for when we look at things and from everything from air conditioners to.
Water valves.
Yeah, whatever. And also, well, I've got city equipment and property management and city, the city building repair and maintenance. We had talked about maybe doing a tour and just literally walking through this, this old lady and taking a look at, at how it is. July 22nd, I've got capital improvement plan and we need to get Darren in and talk to us about that. To me, that seems late, but, and then we also talked about a street, street signage in the city and sidewalks, kind of lump those two together. And then November 25, broadband fiber optics, that might be the, we got the guy from Vive who's volunteered to come in and, and tell us that Vive can do it. And then also on that same meeting, recycling and trash. So I'll send that out. It's totally subject to change, but I'll send it out so you have, I'll give it to Janet to send out. Other thing, I had another meeting with the hospital administrator and the school superintendent today. Mark was there as well. Just really think those are going to be productive. It just, we've got two young people in those positions and I think they're really looking big picture. They're looking long term and also they're looking big picture and willing to take some, take some action on things, which I, I don't really, not a lot I can say, other than we talked about ways we could cooperate to the city support maybe the school in getting some. the school in getting some class offerings in things that would be maybe from a tech school or junior college, community colleges, so that you could, some people that aren't really interested in going to college could maybe, while in high school and then a little bit after high school, get a skill that they wouldn't have to leave town to make a living doing. So that was today, I thought that was a good discussion. We also, last week, talked about wanting to set up a schedule for city supervisory staff. I think we probably said department heads, but we have, we have a weird organizational chart here, and the, who's the department head doesn't mean, we have other people that are supervising groups, but they aren't technically department heads that we might want to hear from. But what we had talked about was having them not be in a position where they just had to come to every meeting, or they never came to any meetings, but rather we set up a schedule so that maybe Jason Wheeler for the water department and somebody else for some other department would come in every, once every couple of months, or whatever the case may be. And I think the only way we're going to get that done is to first determine what we consider a supervisory person, and then we could easily do a schedule. But I think Mark could do that, I'll be glad to help Mark with that, but you want to proceed on that? I talked to Tim today, and he was, Tim, Tim the Greater. Tim the Greater, Tim the Greater, not Tim the Lesser. He indicated he, that was fine, he was willing to do it, but he did want to stress that any council member is more than welcome to hit him up anytime that they have any questions about anything. And the last thing that I wanted to address was, obviously, if you read the paper, there was confusion with regard to splash pads. So just to make the record accurate, I had talked with the chairman of the committee foundation, MAC, and the chairman of the economic development board. We had a lunch meeting because there were some grant opportunities that we thought we might, that with those being not-for-profit corporations, might be able to reach out and get some, something we might want to have. And we, the meeting was actually about what kind of things might we want to do, and we talked about using the grants, if we could get a grant, and all of them are matching grants, so that's problematic. But ultimately, we came up with the idea that maybe we ought to explore a splash pad. So one of those persons, we agreed on a location that seemed logical, so one of those persons went and talked to the owner to see if they'd be willing to sell, and if so, at what amount they would want to sell. I asked Mark to do a little research to see if we wanted to go down that road, could we afford to do it? Nothing sinister about it, I was getting information. As you know, there were no meetings of the group to talk about splash pads, and Mark provided me with information from Emporia and other places, and I know that when I would go in and talk to him, there was a lot of discussion of splash pad and what the options would be. Why Janet was thinking splash pad when she did the minutes the other day, I don't know. Is it because there's something sinister and underhanded going on? No, it obviously must be because she'd heard Mark talk about splash pad and put it in. But that's the end of the story, we've done nothing on that, wouldn't do anything on it, couldn't do anything on it until it was a decision to proceed on it. And I, at this point in time, do not think that it's something that we're in a position to proceed on based upon the information that Mark has given me. I know that the person that wrote a letter to the editor and quoted an amount that it would cost to build one was, that was in another universe, it was so high, the cost would be nowhere near that. But I'd like to continue to look into it, I'm going to continue to locate, look into it, nobody can stop me from continuing to look into it. And at some point in time, if I feel like there's community support for it, I'll bring it back up. And I would encourage all of you, and I want to make this very clear, because I'm worried that you don't understand this, you have an absolute right to go talk to the city administrator about anything you're interested in anytime you want to. And frankly, if you're not doing that, then same on you, because I think you should be. There's nothing wrong with it. So with that little rant over with, anything else anyone wants to do? Oh, last public comment. Anything from anybody, public comment? All right, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose nay, motion passes. Thank you.